Good evening. I'm Sharon Ree, Chair of Planning Commission, and it is my pleasure to welcome all of you here tonight for our August meeting. Uh, before I call the meeting to order, I do want to announce once again that the rezoning request for East Montague Avenue has been withdrawn by the applicant until September. This meeting of the Planning Commission is now called to order. Let me, once again, um, explain the sign-in sheet. There was a sign-in sheet out there for one of the agenda items. Let me emphasize that this will be a public meeting, it will be a public hearing, and you are welcome to speak regarding this agenda item. Several people did sign in, um, and you have the opportunity to do that, but once those people have spoken, you are welcome to come in and to come up and, and just give us your name and address, and you can make your comments. Each person is limited to three minutes. Three minutes each.
Do I just stand up and do it?
Well, when we call for the public hearing, I'll, uh, yeah, you'll just stand up. Once your name is called, well, not right now.
Okay.
No, but once we call for the public hearing, we've got a couple of other things that we need to take care of before we get there. Uh, but you are limited to three minutes each, and we do ask, for the sake of time, that if someone else expresses what you wish to express the same way, you are welcome to say, as the former speaker said, or as so-and-so said, I agree. All right, we are calling this meeting to order, and we will begin with consideration of the minutes from the July meeting. Commissioners, are there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, and it'll be a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the July meeting as published, say aye.
Aye.
Those who disapprove, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved as published. The first agenda item now is the, it's a public hearing. Consideration for, uh, recommendation for proposed rezoning. Amendment to the planned development known as Reverie on the Ashley. Not rezoning, proposed amendment to that planned development. Here's a report from staff.
This, uh, request is a proposed amendment to the planned development known as Reverie on the Ashley. Charleston County TMS, uh, four-one-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-seven. Revises the building types. Property, you can see here, highlighted in blue. And, uh, the planned development district, Reverie on the Ashley, the proposed zoning is staying the same. Just within amendment, amended planned development, uh, document. The existing land use condominiums. You can see here, the property outlined in blue, highlighted in this green, is Zone PDD, which is Planned Development District. Surrounding zoning is M1 and ON. Comprehensive plan, uh, the future land use map designates these properties for employment center and suburban residential, which support single-family and multifamily residential uses. The proposed amendment to the PD would be consistent with the future land use designation for this property. See here, uh, both street view and an aerial view. The subject property is currently developed with condominiums, uh, located in the four buildings. You can see in that photo. Adjacent properties, uh, the parcels to the east are Zoned M1 and are a radio and media center, as well as a pharmaceutical manufacturing company. PD amendment proposes to establish new forms of allowable building types, including single unit buildings and attached townhome style units. The, to establish development standards for the single-family and townhome units. Both building types may be up to four stories in height, and will not exceed the height restriction established for the overall development. Parking will be provided underneath the units, up to eight single-family units would be allowed, and up to fourteen attached townhome units would be allowed. Staff's recommendation is approval. As the proposed land uses of the planned development are supported by the comprehensive plan, and are compatible with the adjacent uses, staff is recommending approval of the request to amend the Reverie on the Ashley PDD.
All right, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to come forward and speak?
Yes, I'm Martin Grambling with, um, with Grambling Brothers, that is one of the development partners in Reverie on the Ashley. Um, the, the purpose here is, is, as Tim said, just to amend a building, the building type, so that we, instead of building these very large condominium units, you get the same number of units in smaller buildings, which is, in some sense, necessary from a commercial perspective, just that it's, it's very difficult to build those large buildings now. But also because we, you know, we think there's a demand for it, and we think that it, it fits the site a little better. And just to reiterate, um, the Reverie on the Ashley, um, original PD and Master D called for eighty-eight units. So, it, you know, units were always envisioned on these two pads. And this plan actually, uh, calls for finishing out at eighty-six, so, um, twenty-two new units instead of the twenty-four that would have been, uh, allowed. So, in fact, it's a, a net reduction in the, the density by two units. But, in any case, happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is an advertised public hearing, uh, and we do have some people who have signed up. Again, we ask that you take three minutes. Uh, Wendell, oh, Doug Green. Doug Green.
I'm heading out for, uh, commissioners.
You can come right there.
Um, and this is, is, this is a, the original, um, plan, um, with the six buildings shown. Second page is the, uh, new plan with the new buildings shown. On the third page, it's this. I'll go to the back, I'm looking. Anyway. My name is Doug Green, and my wife and I have been proud to call the Reverie home for about over a decade now. And we bought there because it was a clear and thoughtful plan, one that respected the marsh, provided walking trails, and maintained privacy. We paid a premium for that, that certainty. This rezoning, or whatever you want to call it, this throws that certainty away. Houses will push deep into the lots. You can look specifically at page two. Look at the lot on the far right, the proposed housing goes way up against the marsh, much different than that one small building. Look to the far left of page two, you have houses, town, townhomes that are going to be built almost against current building two. So, erasing privacy. There's no clear answer on pricing, potential buyer pool that they're looking to, to sell to. And this is going to cause us to have to have two HOAs, because those will be totally different buildings with totally different maintenance needs. It will not blend in with our current HOA situation, especially if he does elevators in all twenty-two, as, as he's proposed. I will say, our community is united, we did a survey, seventy-six percent of our people said they were against this. Twenty, twenty-two percent said they wanted more information, and only one person voted yes, they wanted it rezoned. And I will say this, in our Master D, the developer does have the right to change to what he's done. There's a clause in there on page three, and at the end of that clause, you will see, it says, he can do this as long as it doesn't material affect, materially affect any owner's interest. This proposal does affect owner's interest. It changes density, walkability, privacy, and the very character of our neighborhood. Let me be really clear here, we're not against him building what he said he was going to build. We're against a plan that breaks the promises, reduces livability, and risks our investment. I'll leave you with these last couple dots. We brought in, we bought into the Reverie on the Ashley, we weren't buying just walls and a roof. We are buying into a promise, a promise of a certain plan, a certain quality of life, a certain protection of our investment. Your choice is really simple tonight, protect the integrity of the original plan. Set a precedent that commitments to homeowners can be erased whenever it's convenient. And I, on behalf of a lot of my neighbors here, I urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Uh, let me clarify, I misspoke earlier, this is not a rezoning request.
Right.
This is an amendment to their plan, but this is not a rezoning request.
So, I request you reject this amendment.
Thank you. All right, um, Wendell Brown. Wendell Brown signed to speak during this public hearing? Uh, Charlene, help, is it Kersey or Kelsey?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Charlene Kersey, I live at Reverie, I've been there two and a half years, and I love it. Uh, it's a perfect place for me, my dog, I love my neighbors, I like my community. And as everyone else, when we bought over there, we were given a plat, or what was to be. There were two pieces that had not been developed. One would be another building, just like the one I live in now, and at the other end, because of area, there would be a half building. In other words, just, um, eight units instead of sixteen. And I accepted that, you know, the man owns the property, he needs to get his investment. But he does not need to bring in a whole different showcase of houses. You know, we're comfortable like we are, the roads are fine, and we don't need all these people coming into all these different houses. So, I like it like it is, and I hope you don't change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure about the last name, Vito, is it Marcel?
Close. Marcelo.
Oh, Marcelo, okay, thank you.
Um, my wife Sheila and our two little kids vacationed to Charleston a little over twenty-five years ago. And on our way home, my wife said, I will end up there someday. Well, it took us a long time, a lot of work, but in two thousand thirteen, early two thousand thirteen, we purchased a condo in building five, which at the time was just a shell. Uh, it took a little over three years to get done, because, uh, we ended up closing at the end of two thousand sixteen. Um, call me old school, but when I shake someone's hand, it's a promise come. Obviously, when you purchase, uh, property like this, you need, you need more of that. So, we did sign legal papers. And on the legal papers we signed, we were moving into a condo development. It would end up with six buildings, not twenty-six. Would end up with six elevators, not twenty-six. It would be one building on the far right, next to building two, which would be a full building. And where we are, building five, close to the five-twenty-six, smaller area, so it's only going to be a half a building there. Only eight condos there, half a building. Now, we had option, because after six months it wasn't done, we had the option to leave. We had the option to look somewhere else. The view we have of the marsh, the view we have of the river, the privacy we have, it's exactly what we bought. It's exactly what we wanted to have. So, we did it. With the new amendment, where building six was going to be, now goes deep into the marsh. It takes away the view, it takes away the, the, looking, seeing the river, it totally takes away the privacy. Those six buildings by themselves, everybody out on their patio is full privacy. Now, it's going to be like an apartment complex, you're going to see right across, you're going to see everybody out, out the patio. Which I have a very big problem with. Also, so, we've been here eight years, the people we've met, friends we've made, you first start talking, it's like, where you live, right off five-twenty-six, those condos, they're like, oh my God, they're, they're beautiful. Well, some of the friends we've made, we have talked about what the possibilities are. And with all the people going up and down five-twenty-six, looking at that condo development now, are going to see a total, total different thing. They're going to see a total different thing. Uh, again, um, it, it's amazing, if this passes, I would be very surprised that what you people are actually looking into compared to what we all bought. Doug did mention seventy-six percent of our people are totally against it. Well, those twenty-plus percent, once they get more information and look at it, I'm going to guarantee you sixty-three out of sixty-four building people that are there right now will be against this. So, hopefully, you will take that in mind.
Next, John, and again, I can't read the.
John Beuston.
Beuston, okay, thank you, come on up.
How's everybody tonight? I just got a few comments, um, to echo briefly what we've already heard. Uh, Mr. Grambling stood up and he said, the reason why they wanted to pursue this type of a product on our property was because it was more commercially feasible than building the buildings that are already there. And I'm not sure that should be a reason for y'all to approve this proposed project. I would also like to ask if any of you have been out to the, um, Reverie on the Ashley? Have you been out there to look at the property? Have you been out there to look at the property in relation to this meeting tonight? Okay, so then you, by looking at the plans, you would then see that the density situation is going to change tremendously by going from what would have been one additional sixteen-unit building to now, on that side, there would be, I think it's fourteen buildings. So, it's going to change quite a bit. If you look at the position of each of the buildings, as they look over the river, they've been positioned so that they do not obstruct the view of another building. So, echoing what, um, Mr. Marcelo said, now, the way this is proposed, these buildings will be constructed where it's going to be obstructing the views of some of the people in the second building, and some of the people in the fifth building, which was not part of the original plan. So, for all the reasons that we've already heard, I too would ask that y'all deny the request, and hopefully recognizing that all of these people here tonight can't be wrong just for the developer to be right.
Uh, next one, is it Danny Kennedy?
Donnie.
Donnie.
Donnie Kennedy.
We bought into Reverie in two thousand twelve, my wife and I, Ginger, in fact, we bought two units out there. So, um, we really liked the place. When we went there, we were, we were taken away by the landscaping, the, the atmosphere, and, and just really said, hey, this would be a place that we would like. It was our second home. We lived in Greensboro, North Carolina. A couple of years later, I was like, Ginger, I love it so much down here, we need to move back to Charleston. We were born and raised here, we needed to get back, so we moved back, and everybody said, where are you going to be your house? What, where are you, I'm like, Reverie is the place we need to be. Because we love it, great, great landscaping, great views, the river, the dock, great people, a great community, and family of, of people, which is very important to us. And it's heartbreaking to see that we, that what we bought is going to be changed for all of us. I mean, it's, it's, and, and, and I think the main reason that Tim, you recommended this to be approved is, is because of cost. And it's not our fault that cost had went through the roof. I'm a builder, I'm a developer, I, I build houses and, and all. I mean, when I give a man my word, if it costs me money, I'm going to finish this house for him. And, and I think the Gramblings ought to finish the project out with, with what they started. I mean, not, not one sixty-four of us in here has contributed to the cost of what a building costs today. So, the, the prices have gone up. So, yeah, it costs more to build it, but now you're getting five, six hundred dollars a square foot, not two hundred dollars a square foot where we bought at, back in the, in two thousand eleven, when the economy was down. So, I ask you to take that into consideration, and I don't understand what, what, what is the benefit to the city of North Charleston to destroy our neighborhood? Because it's not like we are a huge development. We, we, we have one gate, we go in, and it's a, it's a small development, and twenty-four houses are going to destroy our community. And I just ask you to take that in consider, consideration, or a rejection of this amendment and proposal.
Thank you. Is it Joe Altman?
Hey, everybody, I'm John Altman.
John Altman.
And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has on any side of this. I think it's important to go ahead and point out, and I appreciate everybody's remarks, this development was always envisioned to have a certain number of units. And I want to, uh, at least address the misconception that this, this application does anything to change the number of units. It's the same number of units, in fact, as Mr. Grambling said, it's less units than the original Master D from over twenty years ago. So, I think that's an important point. There was always envisioned to be eighty-eight units as part of Reverie. Now, there've been sixty-four for a moment, but from the very first document that was filed, it was going to be eighty-eight. So, what the applicant is, is asking for is in fact a decrease. There's no, there was always going to be more folks living out there. The intent was always to develop these two pads. Nothing has changed from, from the first incarnation of this plan, so I, I want to go ahead and dispel that notion that somehow the applicant is asking for more units, or there's some addition. There's not. And the second thing that I, I want to go ahead and address for everybody in this room, because there's a suggestion that there's been some sort of change. The applications from, from the documents from over a decade ago, the Gramblings told everybody here that they retain discretion regarding plans and specifications and those sort of things. They're delighted to hear from you guys, but that is what the documents, if anybody bought in the last decade, that is what their documents said. So, that's what they're committed to, they want to hear from everybody, that's why they've met with everybody in this room. But I want to make sure that the folks on the commission know that what they're.
Has the floor, please, he has the floor.
But that is what the application is essentially asking for, which is a recognition of what this project was originally involved, which is eighty-eight units, there are twenty-four that can be built based on the original, and this plan calls for even less than that, so it's actually a reduction. And I think that's an important fact for everybody to know. It's not that twenty-four new units that weren't originally intended, it's in fact a less, lesser amount than that. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have on the commission.
Thank you, sir, we don't have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um.
We need to interject on what?
I'm sorry. No.
Okay.
Paul, Ms. Paul, is it?
No, it's not.
Show?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'm about out, we came for the next project.
Oh, okay. Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there are those of you who did not sign this form, who wish to speak, please come one at a time, and come up here and give us your name and address. One at a time, please. You're welcome to.
I already spoke, can I speak again?
Is there anyone who wishes to? Come on up. And I need your name and.
My name is Martha Welsh.
I'm sorry?
Martha Welsh, and I live in building.
Martha.
Welsh, W-E-L-S-H.
Okay.
And I live in building five. So, that's four-two-four-seven, Favor Place Drive. Apartment four-zero-three.
Thank you. You may begin.
Uh, first, in response to this gentleman, no one has ever met with people who live Reverie on the Ashley with respect to this project.
Is there any, one here who would say, Ms. Marsha, I would like that you direct your comments to the commission, um, just because we can't have the public interjection.
Okay, I'm just, if someone had, was aware, I don't want them to speak, but it is my understanding. And I would have been at any such meeting, so I feel quite confident it didn't occur. Uh, when you discuss the difference between six buildings and twenty-four buildings? Is that how many people have?
Yes.
That's an enormous change in the profile of the community. We all bought, as has been said, so I'm just reiterating something, we bought relying on an understanding that there would be no more than six buildings that would accommodate the same number of people as stated in the cup, in the, uh, covenants, whatever we call them. Uh, so, we are not objecting to having more families. We are not objecting to right to vote, but we are saying that building what we were promised is what we're asking for. And with respect to this economic viability argument, yes, you know, in two thousand three, the market was not good. In two thousand eleven, the market was not good. But in the last ten years, the market has been terrific. So, this idea that somehow now it's not economically viable, it's just, you want to do it now. You could have done it at any time with respect to what we were told we would have, and it would have been economically viable, and I would argue it actually still is, it's just they don't want to deal with it. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chuck Shields.
Wait, 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 you said Chuck.
Shields.
Chuck.
First name is Chuck, C-H-U-C-K.
Fields.
Last name Shields, S-H-I-E-L-D-S. I live at forty-two fifty-two, favorite place, number three-oh-two. The attorney seems to think that twenty-four buildings and two buildings are the same. They are not. I am an ex-developer myself. If I've got twenty-four garages pointed towards a circle, it obviously changes the atmosphere of the. it obviously changes the atmosphere of the project. I'm not sure we're even talking about residential. If we're talking about twenty-four units, then we're totally changed from the original eight. And I think that this proposal of townhouses versus a condo building completely changes the nature of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else who wishes to speak during this public hearing? Nope. Right hearing, none? I'm sorry, was there someone else? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Uh, we will entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny recommending approval of the request to amend the Reverie Ash, Reverie on the Ashley Plan Development Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we deny approval of the proposed amendments to this planned development. Is there discussion?
I would like to say, I made the motion, but it, it does sound there's a significant amount of change to that original plan. I understand that it's probably the same amount of units, but it is a different kind of structural formation for those that does impact, I think, the quality and the character of, of the development. And I, you know, I think, I would encourage all the other commissioners to see that, you know, recognizing the quality of life and the character of a neighborhood, of a plan development is, is important.
Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Juon?
Aye, none.
Uh, Mr. Griezman? Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Van Hannigan? And Ms. Reed?
Aye.
So that is four to two. To deny, this case will next be heard at the September eighteenth, City Council for First Reading. September eighth? September eighth, First Reading. Uh, and then, uh, Public Safety on the eighteen, where additional public input can be made.
So the next opportunity for public input is September eighth?
Eleventh, September eleventh.
Eleven?
I'm sorry.
At Public Safety?
September eleventh, First Reading, and then Public Safety on the eighteen.
Input on the eighteen.
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, would anybody like to leave before we move on? We'll give you some time to do that. Now, you're certainly welcome to stay. Welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting if you wish.
Hey, I'm Julia, I just wanted to thank you for your hard work, you seem to really understand. Monti, just.
Okay, we're, we need to move on. Alright, the next agenda item is consideration for approval of a preliminary plat and road name approval.
Uh, the preliminary plat is proposing to subdivide approximately twelve point seven acres into thirty-nine single-family lots, two new public right-of-way, Clark Meadow Street and Scopper Street, and two HOA lots off of Dewood Drive. This preliminary plat is in proper order and may be approved at the discretion of the commission contingent upon the following items, approval of detailed drainage and road plans by the city engineer, and availability of water and sewer. Staff's recommendation is contingent approval.
Okay, you've heard the staff report, are there any questions from the commissioners for staff? This is not a public hearing. Uh, is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we grant contingent approval of this preliminary plat and road name approval. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Uh, Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Juon?
Aye.
Mr. Griezman?
Aye.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Van Hannigan?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Okay, the next agenda item is consideration for approval of preliminary plat and road name approval again. Hear the staff report.
This is a preliminary plat showing subdivision, TMS four-seven-eight zero-six-zero-zero, parcel zero-three-zero, zero-five-four into new HOA parcels and road name approval of Lemon Lime Avenue. The preliminary plat is proposing to subdivide approximately seven point six-three acres into seventy-four garden and cluster single-family lots, a new private right-of-way, Lemon Lime Avenue, and four HOA lots off of Facet Road. This preliminary plat is in proper order and may be approved at the discretion of the commission contingent upon the following, approval of detailed drainage and road plans by the city engineer, and availability of water and sewer. Uh, staff's recommendation is contingent approval.
You've heard the staff report, do you have any questions for the staff?
I was going to say.
The street name, I would. I don't know how I feel about living on Lemon Lime Avenue.
Basically, our responsibility is just to verify whether or not it, it's been used elsewhere. If this is, meets safety standards, it hasn't been used elsewhere. That's kind of what we just go by, this is what they ask for.
Yeah, they want it, it's fine. I don't, still don't know how I feel about saying, oh, I live on Lemon Lime Avenue. Okay, you.
It could be altogether different from everybody else.
Definitely different, definitely different.
It wouldn't have no problem mistaking your eyes, yeah, it's true.
All my street. Okay, are, are there any questions for staff? I think I've asked that already, right? Hearing none, we're ready for motion.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Including the street name. It's been moved and seconded that we accept staff's recommendation and grant contingent approval of this preliminary plat and the road name, approval of the road name. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Juon?
Aye.
Ms. Griezman?
Aye.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Van Hannigan?
Aye.
And Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Alright, uh, please, in other business, take note of the actions uh, by council during their July meetings regarding our recommendations. Do any of the commission members have any comments that you wish to make before we adjourn? Anything staff needs to tell us?
Just a reminder that, um, the con plan review will be at City Council this month. Uh, it's Thursday's First Reading. Common period, and on the twenty-first is Public Safety, and then the twenty-eighth should be final adoption.
So you said there's a City Council meeting this Thursday?
Yes.
Isn't this Thursday also the unveiling of the?
Yes. The official portrait of the.
The mayor, yeah, is being unveiled at seven.
Yes, that's at the beginning of the, uh, that'll be the first item on the agenda.
So we don't have to stay on.
Alright, so if there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned.